President.
Johnson.
Here.
DeNao.
Here.
Ivan.
Here.
Einer.
Here.
Sonner.
President.
Andros.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
And then Nelson.
Here.
Here. The item on our agenda tonight is outside agencies. I'll let Amy introduce.
Sure. Most of you know Lauren Hanson. She's the Director of Greater Yankton United Way. And she has some board members with her this evening. And we'd like to talk to you a little bit about a partnership we've been working on for six months maybe, that we think can help meet some of our goals as well as help some of their goals with collective impact in giving in Yankton. So for all of us, we all know that our outside agencies, while they're not a major part of our budget, they're a major part of our budget discussion. And every year, our committee works through ways we can try to streamline that discussion and make better decisions. Some time ago, Lauren approached me about what if there was a way that United Way could do some of the giving for us. So in other words, in agencies that we have a shared interest or agencies that they're already partnering with and that we currently already allocate funds to, is there a way we could streamline that process for the agency and for the city? So in November, some of you sat on the Outside Agency Committee with me and a couple of our staff members in the United Way Board to discuss how that would work. Essentially, United Way would provide the city with an annual impact report and would seat one city commissioner on the Board of Directors and the finance officer or myself on the United Way allocations committee. This would pertain to only the agencies that we currently provide funding to that fall within the United Way's pillars of focus. And Lauren will talk about that in a little bit. Some of our outside agencies, while they're great outside agencies like Yankton Baseball, they're not necessarily focused on the same things that United Way is. So those wouldn't fall into them. We're essentially talking about seven outside agencies here, and those are listed in the memorandum, and we can talk about those in greater detail. But they're more what I call the human service type agencies. The Pathways for Homeless, is that correct? We call it the homeless shelter, but I'm trying to be correct here in the agency's names. The River City Domestic Violence Center, the Family Visitation Center, those type of agencies. The other agency that's included in this list is the Yankton County Historical or Yankton County Museum, Territorial Museum. That is established under a pillar of an educational grant that Lauren and her board have agreed to establish underneath this agreement. So essentially, what we would be doing is contributing an equal amount of funding, currently what we contribute to those agencies collectively, to United Way. The Memorandum of Understanding with United Way outlines the agencies that we believe are important and the current funding levels. The only one, again, that would be outside of that slightly would be the Yankton County Historical Society. And that would be established underneath the grant. They'd apply through the United Way application program. They'd be reviewed through that application program. And we would then receive an impact statement at the end of the year that would tell us a little more about what the funds have done in our community, which is another one of the holes we've always felt, I think, when we allocate, that some of the agencies, we have board members on, so we have close understanding of what goes on with those funds. And some of those, we don't. So we don't ever really know, you know, how many community members were served, or how far did our dollar go, or what was it specifically used for. So that's another benefit, we think, that for you all to have more information and to be a little more transparent with the public so that they know where their tax dollars are going, because essentially, it's their tax dollars that you guys are all allocating under the general fund. Before I let Lauren talk a little bit about their process and their pillars, I want to talk to you a little bit about some of those other outside agencies. We have a few, like I mentioned, Yankton Baseball, Lewis &amp; Clark Theater. Let's see, who else is in there? Missouri Sedimentation Action Coalition. What I would propose then is that we budget those, as we do now, out of the general fund, but put them underneath the department that makes most sense to them. So baseball would be funded underneath Parks and Recreation. Missouri Action Sedimentation Control would either go under Kyle's Department, Environmental Services, or Community Development. Just whatever makes the most sense fits the best with them, since those are not really underneath the United Way's purview or don't really fit in there. So I'll let Lauren talk a little bit about the process and what their emphasis is at United Way. And then we're going to leave some time for you all to ask some questions.
Awesome. Thank you, Amy. Thanks for having us here this evening to talk about this possible partnership. Our mission at United Way, and many of you know this, but our mission at United Way is to change lives and improve our community by mobilizing people and resources to drive strategic impact in education, financial stability, and health. We work very closely with our partner agencies to ensure that all of our community donations are carefully and thoughtfully put into good use to help the most people. I'm going to go through a few steps that the United Way volunteers take each year. And hopefully, with this partnership, a member of the city staff and the city commission will serve as volunteers within this allocation process. And this is outlined in the memo and the Memorandum of Understanding that you have received earlier. So we start with volunteer recruitment and education. United Way board members, ten to 12, depending on how many are serving and that year serve on our allocations committee. They represent all sectors of the community and participate in a two-month process to ensure that our funds are distributed fairly, objectively, and with great consideration for their best use. The volunteers learn about the importance of building a stronger community by investing in a system of quality agencies to help people. We train our volunteers on relevant nonprofit community issues, the allocation process, as well as our three funding priorities, and those assessment areas. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the allocation process and the assessment areas. I do have copies of a little brief overview of our distribution process, as well as an example of the draft 2018 application that nonprofit human service agencies. It's an open process, open to any nonprofit human service organization. So those are there for your review as well. So agencies request funding annually based on their particular needs and the programs that they provide. Funding requests can be as basic as operating funds to as advanced as developing a new program for a new community need. However, United Way has set three funding priorities and make investments only in local programs that address those priorities. Our three priorities, as I mentioned, are education, financial stability, and health. And it dives a little deeper into exactly what those pillars are in the application process and in the Memorandum of Understanding that you've received. The allocation process, then we score the applications based on the following assessment areas. Nonprofit status. So that means, is the program a well-managed and efficient 501(c)(3)? Do they have an active Board of Directors? Evaluation standards, license, accredited license, local policymaking input, a local presence, and of course, a non-discrimination policy. We look at the financial need of the organization, as well as the financial management of the organization. Is, what is the need of United Way funds for this agency? How much, how many months in reserves are they sitting on currently? And are they asking for the appropriate amount of money from United Way in fulfilling their needs? So it's not just, oh, we get the same amount every year. We're entitled to that amount of money. We make sure that the agencies are using the dollars that we're allocating them to best serve the community. We also ask about the community need. So have they established a need for the community? Or for the programs that they provide? So what is the support data that they tell us and offer to us? Census data, government, internal studies, client reviews. You know, the idea of helping people is a great idea, but we need to see that there's goals and outcomes and indicators being represented in their application. So we, if you look at our application, there are goal, outcome, and indicator sections where they share that information with us. We also look at how they evaluate their program, the evaluation standards, again, support data, duplication of services, more or less partnerships in the community that they have, and that they're staying relevant, serving needs, and partnering with those they need to, to help as many people as they can. So based on the knowledge gained through our allocation process, our volunteers come to a consensus about how much money each agency will receive in the coming year. Once those recommendations are compiled, they are vetted through an approval process, ending with a final decision by the United Way Board of Directors. And following approval, funds are then distributed to the agencies monthly in the next fiscal year. We do ask that quarterly financial and community impact reports are required from each partner agency where we track their outcomes and goals throughout the year. We also offer what are called venture grants. These are for nonprofit 501(c)(3) human service agencies that are seeking funds for immediate and creative responses to the most pressing needs in our community. So this can be seed money for a new program, a new need in the community, or it can be a delivery enhancement grant. Let's say a computer crashes at an agency and they didn't budget $800 in their budget for a computer this year. They can write a United Way grant, and we can help them get what they need to stay sustainable. Those venture grants are just generally funded for a period not to exceed 12 months, and we don't guarantee continued funding. They would have to go through our regular allocation process in the following year. And our agencies do have to be established for one full year in order to become a United Way partner agency. Our volunteers, Betty has been on the allocation committee for many years, and they work very hard. It's not an easy process. And it's a competitive process. And we do our due diligence to make sure our donors' dollars are invested properly in the community. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. I also have an example of a community impact report.
This is a donor report that we send to our leadership donors and our major companies that contribute to the campaign. We're willing to modify this community impact report for what the city wants to see. You know, there's a lot of pictures and a lot of great things happening in our community, but we can simplify the procedure. We also have financial reports available. And I know that our present form, 99% of them, so we can compile whatever you feel you need to see from us. We definitely care about you on an annual basis.
So while you guys are passing those out, I'll just say a couple more things. Many of you know that United Way of Greater Yankton is a partner with Yankton Transit and Lewis &amp; Clark Mental Health. We are as well. They fall under their peers. However, due to the way their organizations are set up, they need to have a governmental entity that helps sponsor some of their grants. So not every year, but often, they apply for grants, and they need a local governmental agency of which Lauren is not. So in talking with them, we felt it best to keep them under that umbrella of the City of Yankton's outside agency application, or outside agency consideration, rather. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I did speak with all of our outside agencies, directors, or somebody from every outside agency board to explain this to them. Hence why we probably don't have a lot of people here this evening. Talked through it with everyone. Also, talked to our folks that we allocate funds through the BBB. We're not talking about that tonight, but I wanted to make sure they understood when we were talking about outside agencies, that we weren't necessarily talking about those folks or contracted services. District 3 is a good example. I reached out to them. So everyone, I think, has gotten a call and/or has had a meeting with me and should understand. One of the things that I really like about this is that I think it professionalizes our allocations, our outside agency allocations and our giving. I don't know, you know, here's the headline, guys, you know, we're not the best at doing everything in government. We'd like to think we are, but we're not always. I'm really impressed with the system they have and the sophistication they have of giving. You know, I just, I don't know, go to fundraiser and spend some money and, you know, buy it. I don't, I didn't understand how really involved and high, it's a very technical process. I like that a lot better. I like that a lot better for you, too, to have more information on the back end if you're not highly involved in the agency. And if you're not on the homeless shelter or you're bored, or you're not on the, involved with River City Domestic Violence, you may not necessarily know the impact ultimately. So that's one thing I really like about the partnership. So we'll be quiet, and we'll answer any questions that you guys have about the process.
Just a comment. I like the marriage. I think this could be a win-win situation. I remember when I sat on the Outside Agency Committee a couple of years ago, it seemed like we were trying to invent this during our meetings. We were trying to invent this syllabus or this matrix that we could plug in these numbers. And I like it. I think it can work very well with what we're looking for in certain financial agencies.
So our contribution, does it just go into the general United Way annual campaign funds? It's not a special fund or anything like that?
No, it would be invested as any other donation from any other company or into our community investment fund.
And the agencies should know, and Lauren knows, and her board knows, that, you know, this number, this current allocation isn't guaranteed. You know, we've in the past been able to keep this, these numbers where they are. But, you know, if we have some major decreases or some financial problems with our sales tax, you know, that might change, and they're aware of that. So everyone should be on the same page there. There is a little bit of a catch, I guess, or a hook. Once this funding is allocated to the United Way, we're not in control of it anymore. We trust the process that they have to do the allocations and to make the contributions and to follow up. But, you know, I need to say that in case that's something that's important to you all, to have that control over who gets what exact dollar amount, you know, based on their process. Somebody, one of these agencies may get, I don't know, $500 more, $100 more, or less, you know. We've set basic funding amounts that we think are what they should be funded at at the current level. But once that allocation is given annually, that's, we do lose that control. And from what I've heard from those on the committee, we're okay with that, especially knowing how sophisticated their process is.
Yeah, I guess that was, that was one of the few questions we had after the meeting in November. As most of us are on some kind of board or committee that's probably associated with this, you know. Members come to you and ask, how can we get more money from the United Way now? That's, as it's explained now, it is out of our hands, and we wanted to make sure everybody was going to be aware of that, that aspect of it. You know, as far as the total dollar amount we give United Way every year, yeah, we can change that. But what they distribute it to afterwards, we can't. So just, so it's clear to everybody, you know. It'll come back to us at some point, probably. You'll be asked about it. But that's the way it's set up, and that's, that's kind of the reason we are all excited about the process they use, is that it's quarterly. So it can be adjusted. It's not a once-a-year dollar amount like we always did. So I appreciated it. I just wanted to make sure that what I understood, that's how it was going to be handled.
What would be the process for an outside agency, say that we're not funding currently, that would request funding? Would that just automatically get sent over to United Way? Or is the city itself going to have some kind of a...
Yeah, you know, if they fit underneath one of the pillars of what United Way provides or their educational grant, I'd send them Lauren's way. And the commission then can annually decide, okay, if Lauren adds an agency, maybe it's, I don't know, a humanitarian agency we don't currently have. And that's something that the commission feels strongly about. We can adjust our MOU and include that agency, or we can put an increased dollar amount into the contribution we allocate. I think, you know, if somebody's coming to us as an outside agency that does not fit into one of the pillars, then it's something that we all have to discuss through our budget process and see if that's something, in fact, we want to add. You know, if it's a one-time request and falls under the purview of the BBB, that might be something you want to consider on a one-time per basis. If it's going to be an ongoing commitment by the city, we'd have to talk about that at the time. You know, we have that now as well, folks that come and ask. And we haven't added many. I think we've only added, in fact, one since I've been here, and that was the Pathways Homeless Shelter, so.
And we're not talking about doing away with our Outside Agency Committee. We will still have an Outside Agency Committee, but maybe they won't have to meet as frequently, won't have to discuss as much.
Well, that'd be up to the commission, you know. If we're not going to change the amounts that we're giving them, you know, I'm not sure, the Missouri, like, for example, Missouri Action Sedimentation Coalition, we give a small amount, nominal amount of money, and they use it for educational purposes. And that doesn't really change. If you guys want to get together and talk about those, we can. My understanding would be, you know, we could do that. If we're not going to follow up on that process, you know, if it's just going to be an application and we have no benchmarks or no goals for them to set or to adhere to, then maybe our conversation can be pretty brief. We currently don't have that process in place, which was one of the impetus for partnering with United Way. We certainly can. I think perhaps maybe the Outside Agency Committee may shift its focus a little bit. We will have a lot of discussion with the BBB this year, but we can certainly still keep that committee intact if you want. I hadn't anticipated requiring those agencies to go through the application process, but we certainly can. We have a couple of agencies that receive larger contributions. That's Lewis &amp; Clark and the Yankton Transit. The rest of them are pretty small, you know, a couple thousand dollars. If it's worth that process and your guys' time, we sure can. That's up to you. That'd be nice to get clarification on, because if we're moving forward with this, Lauren will take this to her board in March, I believe, in the next couple of weeks. And then I'll bring it to you all to consider entering into the agreement. Their process starts, I think, as early as April, and our budget process will start, you know, in May. So we would get letters out to those then and let them know, you know, you're currently, you need to apply under this process, or you need to apply under our process.
Well, I believe, I believe that was the reason why we were going to have one commissioner on the Appropriations Committee and one on the board, was if something came up outside of the funding period, you know, that person could be approached by it, and they could present it to United Way instead of having the entire committee go through that again. Was that the way, did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, so it's an annual process that we, that we conduct. So applications go out in March. They're due May 1st. Award letters are distributed in August with funding starting in January. If it's outside of that cycle, so if there's a request that is within education, financial stability, or health, outside of that area, that's when the venture grant process is available for agencies to apply. But we do not, just to mention, too, I know the city has capital campaign investments in agencies that fall within these realms. We are not able to help fund capital campaigns. So those would be a separate, and I don't know if that falls under your Outside Agency Committee or not, but that would not be included in our allocation process, capital campaigns.
Most of them, most of those requests come directly to the commission. So it's really not an outside agency.
So then during our budget process, we would just see it like a one-line item going to the United Way? We would not see the breakdown, because that's already been processed through the United Way. So we just have one-line item?
Correct, although, you know, once their allocations are made, she'll share that, they'll share that with us, and we'll know. And we'll have then a report from them as to what the impact was each year. Then going into the next year, we can make some, you know, some decisions. I think having more information will be useful in that if you, you know, I know we haven't increased outside agencies much, because our budget hasn't increased much. But going into the future, if you guys do want to make a larger investment in one of those agencies or in the United Way collectively, we'll be able to see what the impact is. And a lot of the other outside agencies, when we kind of started pulling them apart and looking at them a little bit, you know, I think the ones that fall under the purview of United Way are a little bit different than some of the others. So, you know, the homeless shelter can measure an impact, I think, a little differently than, say, summer band. Summer, summer band is a great thing. The money we allocate to summer band goes to pay for the bands. So I guess we could measure impact by attendance at the concerts. But it's kind of one of those things that we're just investing in a recreational opportunity for our citizens that is outside what we provide as a city. So I'm not sure how valuable a process and a lengthy discussion is for you. If you want to have one, we sure, sure can. But I feel like these are the agencies where impact maybe is a little bit more in-depth and more necessary for us to understand. And that's my opinion. That's, that's up to you guys. But that's how I kind of view where we've kind of evolved in our outside agency process.
Did we, in your letter or your conversation with the affected agencies, was there talk about, we are in fact giving up control and going forward will not have a say in whether or not they actually get the money that we have sent to United Way? Was that conveyed to those people?
Yes. The biggest concern, I think, was that, that I heard, was that, well, we don't want, if we're currently receiving $10,000 from the City of Yankton, and we currently receive $20,000 from United Way, we don't want to be in a position where we're just going to receive that $20,000 from United Way as, you know, the United Way contribution. They didn't, they wanted to, you know, the concern was that it was an additional allocation on top of what's already occurring. Most of the agencies, and I didn't understand this before talking more about Lauren, or talking more with Lauren about them, most of these agencies, the funding they have from United Way and the city is called unrestricted funding, meaning they can use it for a lot of things that they can't use some of their grant monies for. So it's a really, I mean, I know all funding for our outside agencies is important, but it's a really flexible kind of contribution for them, which they need to operate, that they're not restricted by rules, certain rules and regulations that maybe a grant is. So, you know, having as much of an unrestricted allocation as possible is important for them. So, yeah, I can't say that everybody was really excited, because it's changed and it's different. And I think there's some, whenever there's something new, there's kind of an unknown, hmm, what's going on here. But it was explained. And I think people feel confident in United Way's track record, that they do a good job, and they do a fair job in evaluation.
I'd like just to mention, too, that, you know, the United Way process is a competitive process each year. And we do our due diligence to make sure that if we're doing our job well and they're doing their job well, and they're asking for that amount based on what their historical number was from the city, and in addition to what they're getting from United Way, you know, if it was 20 and 10, and they're asking us for 30, our allocations committee is going to do the very best we can to make sure they get every dollar they need. We're not going to pool the money and just distribute it equally amongst everybody. That's not how it works. So if an agency comes to us and says, we need $30,000 to go into our operational fund to sustain our program, that's something we're going to work really hard to make sure that their base increases based on historical funding. So we're not looking at cutting anyone. We're not looking at spreading it out evenly amongst everyone. We're looking at them completing the application process the best way they can and sharing the impact they're making with us and the financial need they have from us, and helping support them in any way. support them in any way that we're able to.
Lauren, could you enlighten us about the national, like, how much percentage-wise?
Mm-hmm.
And along with that, how much of a say, like, do you have total flexibility as far as building your plan here or do they have some say in how we go about this?
Absolutely. So United Way, as you know, is a worldwide nonprofit organization, one of the most successful organizations supporting health and human services across the world. And we are an affiliate of that program. We pay less than 1% in of dues to United Way based on money raised in our community. So it's an intensive process that I report back to them about local monies, dollars raised. Some of my dollars I get are raised externally and I get a check, and it's a great day when that happens. But they, they look at the work that we do and the money that we raise and take less than 1% in dues. So I believe in 2015, it was about $4,000. I receive much more tenfold. I get marketing, I get training opportunities, I get to go and work with other community leaders around the world and learn about how to best serve our local community when it comes to collective impact and helping people. So it's a great deal, and I think that we are very proud of our partnership with United Way worldwide.
I think one of the concerns the commission had initially was, we can't continue this level of funding. Our sales tax growth hasn't been significant and, really in the backs of several of our minds was, when we reach the point where we have to say to these agencies, "We can't do anymore" or "We have to do less this year," and I've been down that road once before, and I can tell you it's brutal, but, you know, that's a possibility and I hope that it doesn't happen. But, I mean, that was, again, part of our theory was, you know, how long can we sustain this? Because our Triple B fund is, we're deficit spending out of it. And so it's a, and the general fund isn't growing fast enough.
Those are some questions that my board addressed, too, when we were looking at this agreement. And, you know, we're looking at, at, as any other investment in our community investment fund. You know, we hope that those, those dollars stay steady and continue, continue to increase as community needs arise. But, you know, just like any other company, we, we understand that those dollars aren't guaranteed and, and we just look forward to working together to make the most impact that we can. So we understand that. You know, that's why there isn't, there's recommendations for amounts in here. And, you know, every year, we're going to come and ask you for an amount and you guys can tell us what you're able to do based on where you are in your budget. But I think that was a concern, again, that our board had and we're okay with that process that you have in determining your budget, so.
Is it common for United Way to have this sort of relationship with the municipal government?
You know, there are different relationships like this across the country. A great example is in Thurston County. In Washington, they have a really great model, which, you know, as we talk about collective impact, they gather their city, their county, their United Way and other funding foundations to create community goals together. So we're not funding individual silos and determining what's most important for our community. We're doing it together as a team and then we invest our dollars together. And I think this is a great step in that direction. I think that Yankton, you know, we do a lot of good things and there's a lot of great agencies in our community and we all want to do our part to help. And, you know, creating community goals together as a city, as a county, as individuals, I think, can only help us all.
Talk a little bit more about the managed approach, though. It's not so much just giving these entities $10,000 over the course of a year and saying, "Here you go, we've decided here's $10,000." What are some other things that you're actively doing for these entities throughout the year to help them succeed, right? That's part of the goal. You're giving them money for one, but you ultimately want to help them succeed and achieve their own goals.
Absolutely. So not only do we invest dollars into these agencies, we're advocating for the good works that they're doing in their community. We also serve as providing educational opportunities. We have Spark, which is a new group, Spark Collaboration for Community, where we host monthly community conversations and ask partner agencies and other community members to come and share. You know, we talk about housing. Multiple agencies come together and we talk about how we can work together to solve housing needs in our community. We talk about hunger, we talk about childcare. So we're bringing agencies together and looking at a collective approach to solving community issues. We also provide free training opportunities to any nonprofit in the community multiple times per year, giving them opportunities to, to train and learn more. And, and we do our best to assist agencies when they have shortfalls. You know, we have a wide variety of community members on our board, so if there's a human resource issue, you know, there's two people in a nonprofit and they might not know a lot about personnel policies, we can pull our HR guy and have them go and sit down and help them figure that out. You know, we do the same with legal issues. Any issues a community, a partner agency has, they can approach us and we're here to help them.
For 2018, there's no guarantee that the, the funding levels that these organizations get now from us will continue. It could change as soon as 2018, right?
Yeah, but this would be effective for 2018, so we talk about this in our, in our budget cycle. You know, in the memorandum of understanding, we have recommended funding levels, so we would, I would recommend to you all that in that budget process, we're trying, going to try to adhere as closely as possible to that. But, yeah, in the upcoming years, it could, could vary. So, you know, nothing would impact, would be impacted this year. Some of our agencies already have their funds, some don't, but it would be, I should have mentioned that earlier, too, that it is for 2018 and beyond. And we can reevaluate the partnership as we go forward. One of the other kind of, I guess, neat or added benefits, I think, is since we've been working on this together, other conversations come up. And one of the agencies we mentioned was Yankton Transit. Well, we're now aware that Yankton Transit has a need that isn't currently covered by any of its resources. So we've been currently discussing as a group and, and now you have, we have Commissioner Johnson on the transit board as to, you know, what are the other ways we could maybe make this happen and fill some transportation needs and gaps and talk more about transportation. So I think we have not been a foe of United Way at all, but we haven't been a really true partner. And here we have this great entity in our community already working and, and doing such great things, and we could really use them as a catalyst for some of the things that we want to do and some of the social capital we want to invest in. So that's just been a kind of another neat thing, and Lauren's really easy and fun to work with, too, so that's nice.
So I'd like to add to that a little bit, and there was a reason that I requested the 990, because I think it's important that we do our own due diligence with the entities who we partner with. And the great thing about organizations like yours is you have to be accountable, right, to the IRS. 990s are great things. And I guess I wanted to compliment you because the year that you came into your leadership position there at the United Way, ever, ever since then, each year after, gross receipts have grown. And, and it's, in my opinion, it's a very well-run organization. I'm just looking at numbers. I don't know you that well. All of my interactions with you have been very positive. You're a very positive individual, so you got that going for you. But, good job. Numbers are one thing. It's also interesting to see how low the administrative overhead is within your organization. That's considering last year, it was $500,000 that you guys brought in, very low administrative overhead. So thank you for the service that you provide to our community, for one. And it seems pretty obvious, numbers are one thing, but also personalities are another. It seems like you guys have great leadership in place and that you would be a valued, trustworthy partner with the city.
Thank you very much. I'd like to mention, too, the Form 990 that you have in front of you has shown that growth. And in 2016, we actually did increase our gross receipts by another 10%. And in 2017, another projected 8%. So we are growing, we're growing the impact, we're touching more and more lives each and every year. Our 52 partner, our 23 partner agencies and their 52 programs reached over 13,000 people in our community. So they're, they do incredible work, they change people's lives, and we're proud of our partnership with them.
If we enter into agreement during our budget process, will you be, and we talked a little bit about that earlier, for the application, would you come up with suggestions as amounts or are we going to be working directly with you with the group? Or how are those numbers going to come in?
Yeah, so, so what I would recommend for 2018 is that, you know, we have the recommended amounts, which total up to, close to $40,000, 37-1. So, you know, we recommend that that, we start out that way to you all. If you want to increase it, okay, and then you're going to hear Al and I's famous words, "What are we going to decrease if you're going to increase it?" And then going forward, once we have that first year behind us and understand what the impact is, you know, perhaps you do want to make a bigger investment in that. And of course, look at your budget and make a determination then. I think it's hard for a request to come or for you all to throw a number out without seeing that impact. And I think that's been part of the struggle we've had, too, is, is how do you gauge and how do you know when to push the gas pedal or when to take your foot off the pedal a little bit? So probably what will happen is Lauren and I would sit down in, you know, probably about this time next year and then start giving some information about, okay, here's where we're at with the agencies that we're funded and, and here's how we recommend going forward or here's kind of what they're thinking. You know, they may come in and ask for, you know, 10% more or, you know, a certain dollar amount more, and you guys will have to make that consideration. But you're doing that now, you just don't have all the information as what the impact was. And even now, if we are able to get data from one of the independent agencies, they may not be able to show the impact in the community the same way that United Way can because a lot of those agencies are interconnected, so.
Well, the reality is, our agencies we've been helping have had to learn to live within a very tight budget because we've not been able to raise our contribution for a number of years. It's just we haven't had the money to do that and nor do I see it next year.
I would agree with, with Charlie on that. And, you know, Lauren's, United Way, because of the job Lauren's done, is growing. So there is maybe a potential for them to access or leverage more funding if, if that's the need in the community.
Well, I think, just to kind of wrap it up, I just think the ones, those of us that sat in on the meeting in November, you know, we came out of this very excited. I think when we talked to all the other commissioners, you got the impression this was a very good thing, this is the direction we should go. And I think tonight you've heard what we heard in November. The dollar amounts, they change or don't change, you know, we don't really have any control over that at this point. But how they're used will be much more effective, I believe. And just listening to you two talk, I think there's a lot of other areas we can probably get involved in that we're not involved in now just by becoming a partner with United Way in the city. So I'm, I'm looking forward to hopefully getting this established and rolling this year and see where else we can, what else we can look at, you know, on top of what we've got in place now. So thank you for your presentation tonight. I think that made everybody a little more at ease again.
So Lauren will bring the memorandum of understanding to her board, and once they act on it, I'll be bringing it to you all probably at our next meeting. And then you can have your, you know, your discussion and the public discussion as well and determine how to move forward at that time.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lauren. Okay. Motion to adjourn until 7 o'clock.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those the same side. Stand adjourned until 7.